All right, good evening, everyone. It's being six o'clock and I call the Coos Bay City Council meeting in order. Would you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? It's good to see everyone here. So, the first item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments? We do. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and read a statement before the public comments. So, citizens wishing to address the city council during the time set forth in public comments are requested to sign the roster, which they did. The public comments period is intended for the public to share ideas and concerns. It is not intended for the interactive discussion with the council. There may be opportunities for the public comments during specific agenda items that require a public hearing. Members of the public are requested to confine their remarks to questions or issues. All right, you can wait until the public comment period. All right? It's all right. So, the public, the members, all right, members of the public are requested to confine their remarks to questions or issues under discussion during this time. During a designated comment period, individuals shall not engage in personal attacks, shall not impugn the motives of any speaker, and shall at all times while in session conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. No person shall make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or unauthorized remarks or become boisterous while attending, while addressing the council. All right, that's a mouthful. And Beth, you're first. Good to see you.
Good to be seen. I'm Beth Clarkson, and I am here today to represent the Coos Bay Downtown Association and to let the council know that tomorrow is the first day of Farmer's Market, but it's actually also Farmer's Market's 25th anniversary. We've been downtown for 25 years, started out small, and now we encompass three blocks and two parking lots and is well received by the, by the community. I also want to take this time to thank the city staff especially that help out to make sure that the market runs smoothly. They were down there today blowing off the streets and cleaning everything up, and they do that almost every Tuesday with the sweeper. You have a couple of really good guys that help out with the electrical part of it, and that is always a snag, but they seem to be able to get it all together and get everybody up and running. We also have, I'd like to thank the police department for making a presence. When they can, they'll come down and walk through the market, and I think that's a positive, not only just a deterrent, but it's a, it's a positive to see them down in the market, and we thank them. I know they don't get the chance every time to walk through, but, but we see them walking through a lot, and we appreciate that. And then just in general, the partnership that we have with the city council and the, and the city of Coos Bay to make the Farmer's Market the success that it is, I'm just here to say with great big thank you. And I left you free gifts, so.
You did. You got us some bags?
Yes, I gave you bags. So, we are fortunate enough to have some sponsorships this year that actually helped pay for those bags, and that was Adcox Heating is a big sponsor for the market this year. So, anyway, wanted to share the bags with the council and some posters and other propaganda that's in there, anyway.
Well, the market's great. I can't tell you, I, the businesses appreciate it. It draws people, people are, as Carmen mentioned today in his presentation, are happy and in good moods, and when I was participating in the market, it was always a great crew and Downtown Association also, the members that helped in do it. So, we appreciate all that you do also. Anyway, thank you. Thanks, Harv.
All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah. I, I want to make sure that I mention that we have Carmen Matthews, our counselor that is online. Lucinda and Jacob were unable to participate today, and we also have Commissioner Drew Farmer in the audience, so, great. Yeah, he should sit right over there.
He rolled out the side.
All right, next public comment, Anna Kin. Is there an Anna?
Oh, Aaron.
Oh, Aaron?
That's me.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Bad handwriting. Hey, folks, my name's Aaron Kin. I live over on Commercial Avenue, and I came down to just put in a plug for bike lanes in, in Coos Bay. We have a great city here, pretty compact, could be a great place to have a lot of people, more people commuting by bike. We have some lanes that are not in great repair. I understand the council's working on some plans to expand them in the future, and I just want to put my support behind that and say that, you know, I think it's going to be good for our city.
Well, it's, you're interesting and it's very apropos. Carmen Matthews, our counselor, made a presentation about, called Happy City. If you get a chance, get the book, read it, and it will tell you about how bikes, biking is important for a city and commuting. And then we just did interviews for our Bike and Pedestrian Fact Finding Committee that we'll be appointing some members to. So, if you're interested, keep an eye out. We do go out and look for members to participate and volunteer, and obviously you have an interest, so keep an eye on it.
Thanks, appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll go on to the rest of the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. Council, how would you like to proceed?
I have a question about the check registers.
The check register?
Yeah.
Yes.
Three, four, twenty-five, on page fifty-two, I see WOW Arts and Exhibits, two thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven. I was curious what that was for.
That's the interpretive signs at the boardwalk.
Oh, awesome, okay. And then throughout, I saw multiple payments to ORCA. Is that for the?
It's for the fridge at the library. That's reuse food share, which is through ORCA.
Awesome, thanks.
Anyone else?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar submitted. Also, there's a $35,000 Oregon State Fire Marshal Grant that's in this. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Presentation, sanitary sewer cleaning efforts in the downtown area. How are you?
Good.
You got a PowerPoint?
Just a second, I do have a PowerPoint. Something pretty to look at.
Yes, yes.
That way, not all the eyes will be on me. And I gotta turn this on.
This has been going on, right?
It kind of has, yes, in the wee hours of the morning, yes.
I see some things and hear some noises, and yeah, go ahead.
Yes, so, I'm here today to discuss the upcoming downtown cleaning efforts. So, we have been cleaning around downtown and kind of not hitting the large lines yet. So, the collection crew, along with the help of the fire department's equipment, will start the downtown cleaning efforts on the pump station one grid shortly. You may or may not know that the city has broken up into different pump station grids, so all the different colors up there represent a different pump station and how it gets the flows to a different spot. Since the city took over operations in 2021, the large lines downtown have not been cleaned. Most of these lines are known to have debris, which is sand and grease in them, and their location and size make them difficult to clean. The picture on the left shows the entire pump station one grid. It is the largest pump station on the Oregon coast. This pump station receives flows from multiple areas throughout the city. These areas include pump station two, which receives flows from Bunker Hill Sanitary District, pump station six and nine, and the Inglewood area, that are also sent to pump station two. It then travels to pump station one, and then ultimately to the treatment plant. Pump station four is off by the old bunker, the old Blossom Gulch School, and that just helps bring it over a little hill to the pump station one grid. Pump station seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-six are all of east side, and that also comes to pump station one. So, it's a large grid. Hopefully, this picture kind of is helpful. The way that you clean a grid is from the outside in, so the collection crew's been working hard, and you may have seen them out there at 3:00 AM to minimize traffic disruptions on Highway 101. The map on the left shows how it operates, and so they are now pretty much within the blue side, so they will be coming downtown. Each line has the potential of sending debris downstream. We do our best to stop that, therefore, working from the outside to the middle makes more sense. That way, you're continually cleaning. Why is this important? So, cleaning efforts are important as the wastewater infrastructure is the largest asset that the city owns. It is of the utmost importance to keep well-maintained for all the citizens that pay for the services. While cleaning efforts occur, the notice of needed repairs are helpful in planning efforts for capital improvement projects. This can help avoid unknown emergencies, doesn't mean it eliminates, but it can help avoid some of them. But the most important part of cleaning lines is that it extends the life of the lines, which is really important for everyone. The city owns two VACON trucks, and both will be working diligently on this downtown effort. Once a line segment is cleaned, it'll be televised and categorized in our nationwide grading assessment system, which also helps in planning efforts, so that way we can see what the lines look like. How does this cleaning work? So, the little jetter, I'm told this little laser thing works, okay. So, there's a little jetter up in the right-hand corner. It'll shoot water out to like form its path down, but it actually cleans backwards. So, it cleans backwards towards and brings all the debris to the manhole, which is where the large trucks will be sitting. It's over the manhole, and they'll suck it out. We can normally do two to three segments, which is like a manhole to manhole, with the water tank on the truck, but some of these lines are much larger than we normally have, so thankfully, the fire department is willing to lend their tender truck for refilling the VACONS as they need, so that way the truck doesn't have to move. It'll only move if it needs to dump debris. Then not, to put this into first exception, the normal lines in the city are eight to ten inches, which is about the size of your head, and these lines that are downtown are twenty-seven to thirty inches. So, this is a slow process, just because of the size of the lines. So, the most important part is when is this going to happen? So, the plan is to start on the slow-moving lines in the upcoming weeks and continue through July. Majority of these efforts will occur outside of normal business hours. Early in the morning, we'll try to minimize traffic disturbances, however, there will be times where there will be minor traffic delays in the downtown area, and since this area is especially busy in the summer, we're hopeful that by coming in early, it won't be too much of an issue for the businesses downtown. During the farmer market days, the plan is to not disrupt any available parking near the downtown area for the market. The main portion of Central where the Farmer's Market sets everything up will not be cleaned on Wednesdays and probably not Tuesdays either, just in case there's a snag there. Staff will publish PSAs for when their traffic pattern changes, and throughout these efforts, there'll be multiple Friday updates, giving the public information on the cleaning efforts. Additionally, staff will coordinate with the businesses directly and notify them. I gave you all a little flyer, so that's what we'll be giving out. So, we'll be planning that, like as we're moving, we'll go to that business and talk to them, so that way they know what's happening, why it's happening, and give a little education moment of why it's important, but then also reassure them that their business will be able to hopefully not be impacted. Another question might be is why does it have to be summer, the busiest time of year? And that is because there are much lower flows in the summer. And then also by coming in early in the morning, most people are sleeping, so they aren't contributing more flows, so that's also helpful to try to get in and out as quickly as we can. So, this is kind of what the setup will look like, and you may have seen it throughout town. Sometimes they're hustling to get off the road at seven, but sometimes they're there just a few minutes later. This is what the setup will look like. We just ask that everyone, please exercise caution when driving through lanes, as we want to keep everyone, driver and workers, safe to return home to their families each day. And that is all that I have. If you have any questions?
Well, good presentation.
Okay.
Questions? So, this is just the downtown, then you, I mean, you go through the whole city, right?
We do. So, every five years, every pipe needs to be cleaned, so we're on the five-year cycle, so that's why we're going downtown. These downtown lines are some of the largest that the city has, and so that's why we're here, because it's not only the largest, but they're also in the high-traffic areas, so.
So, this also gives you an opportunity to make sure that the lines are in good shape?
Yes. That's why they'll televise them after they do it. So, they'll televise them, and they'll see if there's any deficiencies, and if there are, then we can make a plan to go in and fix them on a scheduled basis.
So, there's four people in the crew to do this? Is that what I saw?
There's six.
Six, okay.
But usually just four, because two are out doing locates or citizen concerns and different things. So, it takes two people to run a VACON truck and two people to do televising, so they're busy.
So, that sprayer brings it back to the manhole, and then it's sucked up into the back.
Into the truck, yep.
So, what happens to that material?
It goes to the wastewater treatment plant, and it gets dumped into a bin that's a de-watering bin, so the water goes to the treatment plant. It stays right there, but the non-water material is taken to the dump.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you, and passer, I'm sure they're, they're sleeping right now, they'll be getting up at three, so tell them, we appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next item is, where am I at here? Action item, so approval of the Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. Commissioner Farmer. You just didn't want to come, you just didn't come down here to?
Not even listening to me. No, right? I'm from the government, I'm here to help. So, proclamation, did a lot of my work in mental health, so I get to read it. Whereas the area that someone lives in plays a significant role in their overall health and well-being, and whereas surrounding, surroundings can impact if, how, and when a person's needs are met, which turns, in turn affects mental health, and whereas having safe, stable, and healthy home conditions sets the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health, and whereas with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full prosperous, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and have a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support preventative efforts.
Now, therefore, I jump in. Mayor of the city of Coos Bay do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 to be Mental Health Awareness Month. During this month, I call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Coos Bay to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. So, with that being the case, I will need a motion and a second for this proclamation to be accepted.
I move to approve the proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. Any of the comments, discussions?
It's really hard not to vote when I hear you call for the question.
You can join in. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. I did, there's a report in here. Did you want to give anything on that report, Nicole, or not? There's a cover page in here. I mean, I think it covers it, the proclamation, but I didn't want to overs.
Yeah, I mean, the intention, obviously, inviting Commissioner Farmer here was to give him the opportunity, based on his, you know, work here in the community, focused on mental health. The staff report is just a general kind of background. I think it, it's kind of in the, yeah, proclamation as it stands.
So, with that being the case, Drew, have you had any success in Salem at the legislature with any kind of action or action they're thinking about, or?
Yeah, a lot of my focus right now has been the measure I brought up or the ballot initiative for the 5% of income taxes to come back to their county of origin, and I reached out to Patty, the Director of League Organ Cities, this morning to get some conversation around how that would interplay with cities and how a portion could also go to cities. So, if we had additional revenue, obviously, we could have more efforts interacting with the public, hopefully be able to fund some additional housing for folks that are mentally ill. But right now, as far as the state hospital goes, that's gotten stuck a little on hold. Folks might have seen that the director of the state hospital was removed on very short notice. They've had twenty-two fatalities in about three or five years, I forget what the timeframe was. So, the state hospital is now being investigated by the federal government to see if it can even stay certified. So, that, that threw a damper on any efforts in that direction and kind of took precedence.
Sure, that's too bad. That's sad to hear.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate all your work on this. It's definitely important, and will make a difference if we ever can get it in the right spot at the right time.
Oh, yeah.
And get the funding for it, so, thanks.
I might cause trouble elsewhere.
All right. Okay. Next item is approval of the Wildfire Awareness Month proclamation. Chief Atkins?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. May is recognized as Wildfire Awareness Month in Oregon, highlighting the increasing threat of wildfires driven by prolonged drought, rising temperatures, and expansion into the urban interface. In 2024, Coos Bay Fire Department personnel deployed for sixty-eight days across Oregon and fourteen days to California in early 2025. This all highlights the year-round need for wildfire readiness. The proclamation supports statewide efforts to promote defensible space, emergency planning, and public awareness while recognizing the vital role of our firefighters. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Ashton Galloway to come up and read the proclamation. Ashton was hired in January to be one of our apprentices. Couple weeks ago, we did a hiring process. I think we had right around thirty applicants, and at the end of the all-day hiring process, Ashton was ranked number one by all eleven evaluators, so, which definitely says something to not only his character and abilities, but also to our apprentice program, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's great to have you here.
Good to be here, thank you. Reading the wildfire awareness proclamation, whereas wildfire is a serious and growing threat to the lives, property, and natural resources of Oregon's communities, including those in the city of Coos Bay, and whereas changing climate conditions, increased fuel loads, and expansion into the wildland urban interface have heightened the risk of devastating fires, and whereas the Oregon State Fire Marshal, Oregon Department of Forestry, and fire service agencies across the state work diligently to promote wildfire preparedness, prevention, mitigation strategies, and whereas the Coos Bay Fire Department is committed to protecting life and property through public education, community outreach, defensible space evaluations, and partnerships with the state and local response organizations, and whereas individuals and families play a crucial role in reducing wildfire risk by creating defensible space, preparing evacuation plans, and staying informed during the fire season, and whereas May has been designated as Wildlife or Wildfire Awareness Month in the state of Oregon to raise awareness and promote action before fire season peaks.
Now, therefore, I, Joe Benetti, Mayor of the city of Coos Bay, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 to be Wildfire Awareness Month. During this month, I encourage all, I encourage all residents to take proactive steps in protecting their homes, neighborhoods, and natural landscapes from wildfire, oil fire threats. Mouthful. Anyway, with that being said, I need a motion and a second to approve this proclamation.
I move we approve the proclamation declaring May as Wildfire Awareness Month. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Wildfire Awareness Month proclamation. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thanks for coming and reading, and congratulations. Good to see everyone here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of appointments to the Bike and Pedestrian Fact Finding Committee. Nicole?
Yes, thank you, I'll start us out. So, the Parks Commission, with the approval of the city council, established a Bike and Pedestrian Fact Finding Committee. The city's recently solicited for volunteer positions for a period of roughly two months, both advertising on our website and through the Friday update, our weekly newsletter. We received three applications from members of the community for this committee. There are currently five positions that are open. Of the positions, one is set to expire June 30, 2027, with the remaining for June 30, 2026. And just prior to the council meeting, opportunity to meet with a couple of those applicants, the council was able to have a conversation with them, and I think one is still in attendance here. So, you are being asked to consider appointments to this committee from the applications received.
Okay, and where are those applications?
I move we approve Ryan Tuss, Emily Ranig, and David Milliken to the, oh, where am I? The Bike and Pedestrian Fact Finding Committee. Sorry about that.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint the individuals that Stephanie had suggested or mentioned, but we do need to do a roll call. Am I correct? No?
I don't think so. The only thing I would ask, because there are some two different timelines, if you have a preference for whether it's a June 30, 27, June 30, 26 position assignment.
Okay. So, you need to choose, Stephanie, since you made the motion.
So, Ryan Tuss and David Milliken for the longer term?
Sure.
And Emily Ranig, is that, is that right?
We have one that expires in the long term, the 2027, and then three that were in the, or four, sorry. Yes, one, 2027, four, 2026.
So, four of them only have one year to do?
You may remember that we've been on this path to.
For a while.
To get folks seated on this committee, and so that's the, yeah, the original dates.
Can we change that?
Just, just a question. If, if we're making the motion, it will come back in a year to this council to make a decision to move these people forward, should they?
Yeah, if they're still interested in serving, they could, you could reappoint. And there is opportunity to change, but generally speaking, we would want to make sure that we are balancing those expiration dates for terms, so we, we don't have them all, you know, exit assault at the same time. So, yes, you could change, but that would mean you need to change some others so that we keep that balanced, people.
I feel kind of like I need to rescind that motion and we need more information from the applicants. Ryan, do you have any preference for service? Okay.
I mean, you have three applicants you're looking at. You could put them all at the 2026 period. You still have a couple of positions, consider that, you know, in your next round, just as an option. It keeps everybody at the same space, but.
We have three positions for the.
Three positions, there's actually four open for the 2026. You have three applicants.
So, just make all three the 2016. So, let's just, let me interject on the motion. So, we do have a motion that's before us, and the timeframe, let's make it 2016 for all three applicants. Twenty-six, yeah, sixteen, wow, I'm way going, way back. All right, so, 2026. Yeah, no kidding. All right, 2026.
So, I will amend my motion to, for those three individuals to serve term through 2026.
Second.
All right. With that being the case, are there any other discussions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. City manager's report.
All right, thank you. The first thing I wanted to just put forth, the Water Board is going to be holding their Budget Committee, you know, tis the season, and we received a letter, actually went to the mayors of both cities, asking to have one member attend on behalf of the city for the Budget Committee. I think historically, that's been a position either Roger or myself has held, but that was also, I think, because there was a capacity concern for councillors. So, if there is a member who would like to sit in that role, you're certainly encouraged to do so. If that just doesn't work in your schedules, I'm happy to fill that position, so.
Does Councillor Mathias sit on that?
So, he's a, actually, member of the board.
Would he be attending the, would you, Carmen, be attending the?
He is, but just like we do, council plus community members.
He is, but just like we do, council plus community members are what seats the Budget Committee. And so we're looking to fill that committee, that extension of.
So Carmen, for Sarah, you do serve on the, he serves part of the Budget Committee as part of his position as a Water Board Member.
Yes.
So we usually have one appointee from Coos Bay. So in the past, no one's wanting to step up, but if a councillor is interested in doing so, this will be the time to do that. If not, we send Nicole.
And then I can also share that they currently have two meetings scheduled, Thursday, June 5th. These are noon meetings and they serve lunch. And then Friday, June 20th.
I feel kind of like our city manager needs to be a part, sorry. I feel kind of like the city manager needs to be a part of that budget process, but that's just me. I'm just...
I mean, it's totally up to, I mean, in the past, we've had it go both ways. So it depends on how you feel. So if no one has desire, burning desire to do it, we'll let Nicole. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my, oops, sorry.
I was just saying, we'd be happy to have you.
Thank you. Next on my list, just a reminder, OBAP cleanup this Saturday, they are going to John Topitz. I think it's 10 to 12. Next week, I will be attending the Southern Oregon Economic Development Summit, which is being hosted at Seven Feathers. And I was asked to come and speak on the process that we are currently undergoing under the HUD Distress Community Technical Assistance, specifically on the element of looking at our processes to make things a little bit easier. You know, obviously, economic development is a key to the financial success of the future, and if we can find a way to help people get from idea to actually getting something built, that's really an important piece of that. So we'll be in attendance for that to kind of share where you guys have led us as far as your support of the HUD program. So I wanted to share that at the LLC Spring Conference, we had several members in attendance, and we made some connections with a developer who does traditionally affordable housing, but in very non-traditional ways, in that they don't look for government funding to do that. They actually have a private portfolio of donors, I guess. I don't know a better language for that. And so they did some tours around here, had some interest. And so we did send them a follow-up email yesterday and expect to have further conversations with them. Just wanted to give you heads up, we had, Councilor Stevens was here today and had direct interaction. We have some shortage staff members at our front counter. And so as a whole, our team is kind of working to fill those gaps as we look for some new folks to sit in those seats. It's, it's an opportunity for us to learn a different perspective. Councilor Stevens got to sit at the front counter with me today, and you know, you get some interesting questions, things we don't really know, but it's, it's good to kind of feel out how every, other positions work in the city. And we're kind of looking this as an opportunity in this rebuild, you know, and we're looking at how do we get to yes, how do we create some efficiencies? You know, not the path we would have chosen, but certainly a great way to build a team who can kind of wrap their idea, wrap their mind around this new kind of idea of government being customer service-based rather than regulatory or enforcement-based. So kudos to the team who's really kind of stepping up to fill those gaps, so. Reminder, we have budget meeting, first one, Budget Committee meeting this Thursday at 6:00. And Thursday and Friday this week, Thursday, the mayor and I will be in Salem, meeting with some senators, trying to garner some financial support for the pump station. Be here Thursday night for budget, and then head back Friday to testify in Salem at the Ways and Means Capital Construction Committee. Important that we have FaceTime there so that they can see how much we would value their support, so that's what I have.
All right, thanks. And I appreciate everyone who steps up to fill in on the counter space and everything else. I guess you could, well, could come in once in a while and sit next to you and talk about it. I might just say, we approve everything to make it easy, but then I got all kinds of problems, so I won't do that.
Do we notice that? Not the mayor.
No problem. Sarah, councillor comments?
No comments from me, thanks.
Stephanie?
I don't have any comments.
Troy?
I didn't have a lot, just special election is coming up, May 20th. I just want to encourage the community to get out and vote. We have multiple organizations or agencies. We've got Coos Bay School District, North Ban School District, SWAC, the hospital. All of these positions typically go unfilled. These are made up of nonpartisan positions that are filled by your neighbors, your community members that care about those organizations and agencies. And in these off-term elections, voter turnout is really low. So it is really important to vote because literally one vote can make a difference in these elections. You know, sometimes these things can be taken over by, what I could say is by activist candidates, which have either one ideology or one viewpoint, and that sort of misses the point of what these organizations do. And you need to be there to support the organization and what it's doing, and not necessarily your own viewpoint. Not that your viewpoint's right or wrong, but that's not the purpose of those, those positions. So I would encourage everyone in the community to get out, make your vote heard. Elections are the 20th.
That's it? Thanks, Troy. Carmen?
Sorry, technical difficulties. Yeah, I just echo that. Make sure you vote, get that done. But I also just wanted to say, or join in the celebration of the return of the Wednesday Market. Really happy to have that back downtown. I always look forward to it, and I look forward to seeing everybody out in the community, out there doing their shopping and getting some good produce. That's all I have.
Thanks, Carmen. I also want to remind everyone to vote. It's important, no matter what, there's multiple ones going on in the county, so just make sure you get out there and vote. And we have the drop-off box right out there, so that's great. Also, the farmer's market, it's 25th year. It's a wonderful event that goes on and so many participate, and we're fortunate. Ours is one of the busiest in the state, believe it or not. And I'm not sure where they're at, but at one time, I think we got up to 100 vendors, and I think it's 60 to 80 to start off with, and it just ramps up. And it's great. So go down and buy some stuff and tell them thank you for doing that. And that is it. Oh, I want to thank Carmen and Nicole. They did a presentation today at Rotary on Happy City. I got the book and got to look at it. I know Carmen passed it around. We heard how it got to you, Carmen, today, and also some others looked at it. So it's great. It's a, it's a good perspective on ways that we should think about how a future city can be. And tomorrow, isn't there a bike event with getting some kids to Lighthouse School? Carmen?
Yeah, so that's a good point. I should have mentioned that in my comments. Tomorrow morning is, well, actually tomorrow in general is the National Ride Your Bike to School Day. And I've been a part of organizing an event for here locally at my child's school, which is Lighthouse School. So last year, we saw, we did two of these bike-to-school events, and they went really well, great participation by the students and parents and community members. And so we brought it back again this year. We'll be starting from the Coos Bay Library and heading south towards Lighthouse School, which is at the south end of town. So I would just, if anybody normally travels that route in the morning on their way to work or school, just be on the lookout for a big bicycle parade, basically. Last year, we had, I think the first time we had around 70 people biking, and then the second time, we had well over 100. So it's, it's going to be quite a thing, and we really enjoy doing this, and the kids really enjoy it as well. I want to say thank you to the Police Department and the Fire Department for helping to facilitate the safety of the students as they ride to school. So it's, it's a great thing, and it's part of the Safe Routes to School program, and this is one of the ways that they reach out to different communities to help them invest in Safe Routes to School. So thanks for everybody who's helping to make it happen.
Thanks, Carmen. And that's into my comments, and I, oh, we have an Urban Rail Agency meeting, so I will go ahead and adjourn the Coos Bay City Council meeting, and Stephanie will take care over for the Urban Rail meeting.
And we'll take a short break to switch over, so we'll be back in a couple minutes.